National coverage from NPR News, plus the BBC World Service. You'll find it all with the Radio IQ app. Download it today.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Vertex Pharmaceuticals, where cell and genetic therapies teams are committed to using innovation to create and deliver transformative therapies for people living with serious diseases. Information and career opportunities are at vrtx.com.
It's Here and Now. Taylor Swift made history at the Grammys last night, winning Album of the Year for the fourth time. Tracy Chapman won our hearts again. Billy Joel and Joni Mitchell were rock royalty. She on a throne with a scepter. But the chairman, Jay-Z, made everyone sit up straight when he accepted the Dr. Dre Global Impact Award. The rapper used his speech to calmly blast the Recording Academy for overlooking Black artists, pointing to his wife Beyonce, who's won the most Grammys of all time, but never the night's top prize.
I don't want to embarrass this young lady, but she has more Grammys than everyone that never won Album of the Year. So even by your own metrics, that doesn't work? Think about that. The most Grammys never won Album of the Year. That doesn't work.
Evie A. Anney is an award-winning culture journalist and music critic. Welcome back.
Hi, thank you for having me back.
And thank you, because I don't think you got all asleep. You were in the audience when Jay-Z made his speech. No notes. Your reaction, and what did you see around you?
I think everyone was waiting for someone of Jay-Z's stature to make a speech like that at the Grammys. But I also know that it was unexpected, first and foremost, because not many people had insight on the fact that Jay-Z would be winning an award, because the Recording Academy did not promote his participation for such a prestigious award, which is an issue in itself as far as snubbing Black artists and Black art.
Yeah. Well, as we said, he implored the Recording Academy to do better in recognizing Black artists. He called back to DJ Jazzy Jeff and Will Smith boycotting the Grammys in 1989 because the Rap Awards weren't televised. He said he'd boycotted them at once. Take us back through this history and what people do see as snubs.
So I'm so glad that Jay-Z pointed to the historical connection of most Black people's frustration with the Recording Academy and institutions of the like, because this has been going on for decades, when the Grammys did not televise the first Rap Award. And then this year, the Grammys did not televise the main rap categories on the main telecast, nor did they televise the first inaugural category for Best African Music Performance on the main telecast. So it's not just hip-hop that's being snubbed. It's all forms of Black cultural productions globally that have continuously been snubbed. So Jay-Z pointing to that history specifically with hip-hop also speaks to the other genres that Black people have created and want recognition for, not necessarily from the Grammys itself, but from this part of the world and from these institutions that celebrate Black art and celebrate Black artists occasionally or arbitrarily.
Well, there was also that moment some people might remember when Kanye West tried to take Taylor Swift's award away from her one year because he felt it should have gone to Beyonce. That moment might have come out of nowhere for some people, but obviously not for people who've been simmering, you know, over this issue. We should say SZA won Best R&B Song for Snooze. R&B singer Victoria Monet won Best New Artist. You know, your thoughts on them getting their due?
I think Victoria Monet being sort of the people's champ right now and winning Best New Artist was really celebrated. SZA being celebrated in the categories that she won, but being snubbed for Album of the Year was sort of a bittersweet moment for people as well. So it's not to say that Black artists don't win Grammy Awards. It's just simply not true, because Black art and Black music is, you know, sort of the litmus test for what pop culture is driven by, by and large, for decades. So there's always going to be Black artists that are celebrated amongst various categories. But when it comes to the most celebrated moments of the Recording Academy's presence, like Black artists not winning Album of the Year, specifically Black women never winning Album of the Year, I think that's the biggest concern. Beyonce is the most decorated artist in Grammy history and has never won Album of the Year. A Black woman hasn't won Album of the Year since the 21st century started. There's only been 11 Black artists in total that have won Album of the Year since the category was introduced in 1959. And the math on that just doesn't make sense to people, as Black people have contributed so heavily to pop culture and the musical canon of this country. So no matter who wins year after year, who happens to be Black, I feel like the frustration comes from the fact that people's contributions are not recognized when they need it most. And it's not to say that the Recording Academy is the first and the last frontier as far as what we value in culture, but it does have a material effect on artists' lives and it has a material effect on how we document culture.
Evie A. Anney, award-winning culture journalist and music critic, along with Jay-Z, giving us something to think about this morning and during the day. Evie A., thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Well, we should say there was one Black artist who got her due last night. Tracy Chapman. Some of us saw her busking in Harvard Square a long time ago. Last night, she performed live for the first time in years. Miley Cyrus did a, yeah, little literal mic drop. Tracy just sang one. Evie A., thank you so much. And here's Tracy. And I'm Robin Young in Boston.
I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda. This is Here and Now, Going Out with Luke Combs.
Funding for Here and Now comes from WBUR Boston and Northeastern University's Institute for Experiential AI, partnering with companies to address AI challenges and advance responsible AI, life sciences, health, climate, and more. Learn more at ai.noretheastern.edu.
All right, the 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for today, February 5th, 2:00 PM is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Mrs. Susan McCord, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Ms. DeVallison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. And Mr. Cready.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Thank you. Anna Quorme, who's present. Today, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Jeff Wilson, pastor of Genesis United Methodist Church. I have time to greet you. Reverend Wilson, where are you?
Here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and I'll lead you in the path of allegiance following the invocation. Please stand. Let's start.
Gracious God, we come today and we just thank you for our many blessings, blessings that we so often take for granted. We thank you for this beautiful valley that you're going to supply us to grow, to raise our families, to work. We just thank you for the beauty that we so often take for granted. We thank you for those that have been called to be civic leaders. We thank you for those that work throughout our valley, whether teachers or first responders or municipal workers. God, we just thank you for their service. As we come into this space, we ask that you grant our leaders and those that are present peace, peace and wisdom, and so that in this space, that decisions that will be made will bring you glory. We pray this to you as we claim you as our Creator, our Redeemer, and the One that just loves us. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with the great and justic for all.
Let me thank, thank everybody for coming on for a second session today. And I want to begin with some announcements. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office, expiring on June 30th, 2024. Three-year terms of office will commence on July 1st, 2024, and end on June 30th, 2027. Incumbent school board trustees are Michael L. Cherry II, Diane M. Cosola, who is not seeking reappointment, and Mark K. Cathy. He's not eligible for reappointment. All right? Applications and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov, or may be obtained by contacting the city's clerk's office, room 456, North Sea Taylor Municipal Building, right here at 215 Church Avenue Southwest, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So if you want to apply for a school board, and we use various terms, school board trustees, school board appointments, we, you can, you can get it all done right here, and our clerk will help you. That's important to note. And we got a deadline. Let me say that again. We got a deadline of March the 11th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Not March the 11th at 5:30, or quarter to 6:00. It's at 5:00. We cut it off. If you haven't applied then, we'll just, either if we got enough people, we'll interview people and we'll do that. But that's something that comes up all the time. Many times, people fail to get it in or late making up their minds of what we're going to do. So we want to strictly enforce that. So March the 11th, 5:00, if you're interested in one of the three positions that we have on our school board. All right? For any questions, again, you can contact our clerk's office at 540-853-2541, or by emailing the clerk here at roanokeva.gov. Clerk@roanokeva.gov will contact the clerk's office, and they'll walk you through that process. And it's not a complex one. All right? Hopefully, everybody will get that. All right. Item number two this afternoon is presentations and acknowledgements, and we have none. So we'll go right on to item number three, which is hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council, as he may deem appropriate. We'll refer that. We don't normally do a lot of dialogue with people that come up and make, have some concerns. We'll refer that to the city manager here. And I want to please ask you to remember that. Now, let me say, we got a long agenda today, and we got a lot of speakers that's going to be speaking on a subject that's on the agenda regarding Evan Spring. We're going to wait until we hear from the speaker, and then we'll call you all who've signed up to speak on Evan Spring. And I'm going to tell you now, three minutes, three minutes. You got a number of speakers, three minutes, and I'm going to hit the gavel, the buzzer's going to go off. That's it. That's it.
Just to also remind you, there will be a public hearing later to formally do that.
We'll get to that. We'll get to that, but the public hearing today's got three minutes, three minutes. And I want to strongly enforce that today. All right?
All right, Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak other than, other than Evan Spring?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call them, please, in the order that they signed up.
All right. We have Glenn Zidney. Yes, sir. And then followed by Tara Riles.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My concern is with real estate taxes. My concern is not regarding the assessed value of my home, but rather the assessment rate. I moved here two years ago from South Carolina so that my local family here could help me care for my disabled wife who has dementia. I'm a retiree, retired from the military and also from federal government service. Love Roanoke, and I'm glad to be here. My concern is that the taxes on my house have just gone up tremendously. They've increased $1,000 in the 18 months or almost two years since we moved here, from $2,100 annually to $3,100 annually. I understand from the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing website that there are approximately 49,000 housing units in Roanoke. My house is an average modest house in northeast Brentwood neighborhood, near Hershberger Road and Plantation Road. It's not a grand house, but it works for us. I know that there are some much more expensive houses and much less expensive houses. But if you use my $1,000 increase as an average among all the housing units in Roanoke, that would mean a windfall of approximately $49 million for the city in the last two years. I understand that the tax assessment rate needs to be higher in a city than it does in a county. I understand that Roanoke City has a different population and provides a lot more services than there would be in the local counties. However, the amount is just, I would think, unbearable. I think some solutions that the city should or could look at would be to decrease the assessment rate, even if it's on a permanent base, or to offer rebates to taxpayers so that they're not unfairly burdened, simply because the value of houses have gone up so much. It would even be better if there was a way that these rebates could be issued in such a fashion that they're only spent on local Roanoke businesses. That would be a boon for local businesses. The alternative, if the city does not act, would be, I think, more families are going to leave Roanoke, further exacerbating budgetary issues for the city. Therefore, I think that the real estate tax increase is actually an opportunity for city leadership to look at creative ways to bring more prosperity and development to Roanoke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Tara Riles.
Would it be worth reminding folks that we have a tax rate freeze for seniors and veterans?
I'm aware of that. Roanoke has a lower adjusted gross income cutoff than the state does. We're not, my family, because I've worked hard enough and saved hard enough, we don't, we're not eligible for that. I think that the city could also look at raising the adjusted gross income level for veterans and disabled people.
We did that in our last council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Tara Riles. Okay.
All right, next speaker.
Allison Blanton.
Somebody with Allison?
Yes, Tara, I'm speaking.
Okay, yeah, you're speaking. I just want to make sure.
Tara didn't come. No.
I want to run into things, I know, in the air. Okay. Now I know which way to speak. Thank you all. My name is Allison Blanton, and I'm here on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation. I'm here to speak about the Washington Park I'm here to speak about the Washington Park Pool and the Caretaker's Cottage. I want to express our appreciation and excitement to know that the pool design has been determined that it will not cause the demolition of the pool, of the Caretaker's House, and that is a good step forward. In response to some of the comments that were made at last council meeting, I'm here to assure you all that the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation and the Friends of Washington Park are ready and willing to work with the city manager's office and Parks and Recreation to identify funding and a potential use for this property. We want to be partners with the city on this as we move forward. We ask for you all, we request to have a meeting as soon as possible, and we request that the city be as transparent as possible and work with us as closely as we can. I will say, we have an immediate concern that the building, the city needs to stabilize that building so that it does not become further deteriorated by exposure to the elements as well as the adjacent construction, which is going to be, have an impact on it. I also would request that we have a meeting as soon as possible with the city, and that we could also get access to the building so that we could have one of our restoration contractors look at it to give us a cost estimate, because that's something that we need to know before we move forward with looking for funding. As far as partnering with the city, I do take issue with anybody ever saying that the city was not going to spend any money on it, because the condition of the building is the way it is today because of the city's neglect over the years. That's why so much money might need to be spent on it. And also, remind you, you can only expect a private entity, for-profit or nonprofit, to put so much money into a property that they will never own. And I'm not advocating that the city sell off part of the parkland, but I just say that that's a reality, that you need to be a partner in it. And finally, with it being, if we're going to seek funding, the city in many cases will need to be the applicant, and there may be some matching funds that are required. And we will do what we can to raise money, but again, I feel like the city needs to be a partner in this financially as well, because it is your property, and it's in the condition that it is in today because of the city's past neglect. So that's just very important. Finally, I want to make sure that the public and city council and everybody is aware that while you all passed a resolution several weeks ago for decrying 2024 as the year of the tree, there are some of the oldest, largest trees in the city or in that park around the house that's, my understanding, will need to be removed. And I think it's important that everybody understand really what this is going to look like. And as a final note, I would just wish they would revisit relocating the pool up to the upper end where you would not have to duplicate things like restrooms. I think that could offset the cost of moving the football field, is not having to build two sets of restrooms. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Frida Cathcart.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you today in my capacity as the district director on the Soil and Water Conservation Board representing Roanoke City. I come to you today to express concerns about the comprehensive plan's implementation. I want to remind you that this is Black History Month, and how important it is to remember our history, because those who don't remember their history are doomed to repeat it. We have history in Roanoke that's been very challenging, and I really appreciate you all stepping up to be members of council to provide oversight to the city management as we go through these challenging times. Some of you might be familiar with the book Root Shock, which Dr. Phila Love wrote. I was talking to a former council, council member who said she had only read the part about Roanoke, but there are two other parts of that book, using other localities as examples. One was, had root shock to the community because of losing industry. We lost the visco plant, and I'm excited about Riverdale and the transformative part of that, but, but that really impacted the economy of Roanoke. We also were impacted in 1985 by flood, and the other part of the book talks about natural disasters and how it impacts communities and the economy. So you guys have the perfect trifecta here. You've got urban renewal that hurt a black community, you've got natural disaster, and you have loss of industry that you always need to keep in concern. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because just with the recent decisions that are being made, and like, for instance, Washington Park, like, removing those trees, like, you just put the climate action plan in the comprehensive plan. Removing those trees is going to create more of a heat island, in fact, at a vulnerable place. And Ms. Blanton is correct, you all should look at another location for that if that's the potential cause. You also need to keep updated with the state and federal guidance that will help localities navigate these challenging times. The state has identified the area around Evan Springs as a wildlife conservation priority. The reason why there's federal and state money that comes to help localities is because those have been identified, and I really hope that there's a closer working relationship between the regional and state and federal agencies when there are developments for plans and comprehensive plans. I have reviewed the Evan Springs Development Plan, that's a handout that I gave to you, and M. Plan seems to be used, but I don't see the reflection of D E I, diversity, equity, inclusion included and addressed in that plan, and it seems incongruent with the comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Chris Kraft.
Now, let me just say, Evan Springs comments are later. If I hear Evan Springs again, I'm cutting you off, and we'll get back there again. All right, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Wildwood Civic League, and I want to, first of all, welcome the new chief for police on behalf of our neighborhood. The second, you were talking about the tax freeze and stuff. I'm disabled, I get, have a tax, had a tax freeze on my home. I filled out all the paperwork last year, even brought it and handed it to them when I was coming to a city council meeting. My taxes went up, and when I called, the commissioner of revenues office said, "We never received your paperwork." I said, "I handed it to the lady inside the door," and she said, "We never received it." So my taxes went up $1,200, and I can't afford it. But the main reason I'm here is on behalf of the Wildwood Civic League to tell you that Roanoke lost its best asset last month. Roanoke lost a great guy who did more for my neighborhood and the neighborhoods than anybody in this city, and his name was Michael Clark. He cared about the neighborhood, the kids, the parks, and he had to do work that you pay somebody to work on. He wanted, the city wants him to clean the pristine chapel for what it costs to clean a toilet, and you can't do that. The city needs to add more money to the city parks and rec to give them a decent budget to work with. I miss him, he's going to be hard to replace. Him and the guy, it was Steve Beshure, were the two greatest I've ever met. And if this city would have listened to him and did what they should have, we'd still have that great man in our city offices. Now it's going to be hard for us to do anything because we don't have an advocate for the neighborhoods.
The next speaker is Tammy Montgomery.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, city council. I'm here today to address the drug use and the drug dealing in my neighborhood. I've been in my house for 30-some years, I own it, and the past 10 years, we have so many drug addicts. You can't go outside without seeing used needles laying everywhere. And there's one house a few doors down from me, that's where it's really getting bad. You're seeing vehicles from different states bringing drugs over there, dropping them off. You have the homeless that are going up in there, and the trash that they have trashed around, and not to talk about that, but they're stealing our animals. Everyone's dogs are being stolen out of our yards, dropped off across town somewhere. Luckily, some's gotten their animals back. But we've got to do something to get these people out of our neighborhoods. We're tired, we're fed up. Thank you.
What street do you live on?
Stewart Avenue Southeast.
Okay.
1600 block.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Kimberly Thomas.
I also live there, and it's getting really, really bad. We've caught two people trying to steal our dogs in the past month, and their puppies. People's dogs are being released to be run over by cars across town somewhere so that people have access to our homes. The house across the street from me was burglarized, not even a month ago. It's getting really bad. The southeast community is overrun with the drug activity, the homeless activity, they're sleeping in abandoned houses that I'm afraid are going to catch on fire, and they're right next to me. I work in the southeast community, I live in the southeast community, and I love it more than anything, but I'm afraid we're losing it. Thank you.
And the last speaker for this portion is Barbara Dirk.
I am Barbara Dirk, connect now. Good afternoon, and it is a good afternoon, it is a marvelous Monday. In the latest poll, Roanoke ranked third highest city in Virginia where people want to live. Today, I bring you a key to the city. The city's previous keys I've given you were all different, but these, these keys are all the same, they're all alike, and I've learned from Councilwoman Trish White Boyd about equity. Equity allows us to understand new ways to think about past decisions. Roanoke City Council Mayor and you all as city council members are elected at large. That means that each of you represent me. I live in South Roanoke, I live in the Roanoke that is south of the river, and our properties have easy access to the 600 acres and 10 miles of natural trail on Mill Mountain. Other neighborhoods south of the Roanoke River, like, like Garden City, like Piedmont Riverland, like some parts of southeast, also have access to Mill Mountain and the Blue Ridge Parkway. That's south of the Roanoke River includes Mill Mountain, the Roanoke Valley Greenway, South Roanoke Park, River's Edge South, it used to be called South Roanoke Park, and it used to be a dump, but it's now River's Edge South, and soon to be the new kayak park. Connecting the neighborhoods in the northwest and the northeast north Roanoke needs to happen. City council voted to support the bike and pedestrian accommodations on the Valley View interchange, and when they, city council did this, that they had a requirement, there was a but, and that but was that bicycle and pedestrian across accommodations on interchange connect to something, and that something that they connected to was a new Lick Run Greenway, which connects to the Mill Mountain Greenway. In South Roanoke, I have Mill Mountain, the Blue Ridge Parkway, the River's Edge Sports Complex, and the Roanoke River Greenway on my side of the tracks. It is time north Roanoke has the same amenities. I believe in healthy communities, I believe in the power of vitamin N, of vitamin nature to restore our soul and heal our bodies both physically and mentally. I believe that nature is good for everybody and everything, gun violence prevention, mental illness, physical wellness. You as elected officials, you have the key to unlock the doors, you have the key to open doors, break down barriers and build bridges, use your key to provide equity in the city. South Roanoke, north Roanoke, let's make them the same. Thank you.
As our final speaker. Thank you all, now we'll move down to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Priti.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved, thank you. Our next item on our regular agenda is a public hearing, we have none, and item number six is petitions and communications. A presentation by Friends of Evan Springs to share information with regards to the Evan Springs property. Dr. Theo Lim, Assistant Professor, Department of Urban Affairs and Planning at Virginia Tech, will be speaking to us, he's being sponsored by council members Moon Reynolds and Luke Priti, so we're going to allot him 10 minutes, and once he finishes his presentation, we're going to ask speakers, what is it?
I just wanted to make a comment before he starts.
Well, I mean, that, that generally not to, I, I come to you all after your speaker that you sponsor, I come to you all then, and I'll give you and Ms. Moon an opportunity to address over. But right now, I just want to give the floor to the speaker that didn't come. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Theo Lim, I'm a faculty member at Virginia Tech, and my expertise is in urban planning and community engagement. I'm here to represent a process that my students and I went through with the group the Friends of Evan Springs. And although the Friends of Evan Springs group has very specific goals with respect to the future of that area, the topic of my presentation today is actually community engagement. I have been asked to present before you today, not only by the Friends of Evan Springs group, but also by members of the city's Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, and I'll recommend by the end of my presentation that the city consider adopting a set of principles of community engagement as a way of demonstrating its commitment to restoring trust between government and residents, and especially the African-American community. I was aware that the Friends of Evan Springs were up against some real challenges in their goal to preserve that area as a nature park, given that the parcels in that area are privately owned, and it seems that the city was not keen on the idea of acquiring the properties to establish a park. However, I volunteered to use my graduate course, Collaborative Planning and Community Engagement, to help the group. Over the 15 weeks of the semester, we all found ourselves changed by the process of deep community engagement. In short, if the process of deep community engagement we went through with the Friends of Evan Springs could change us, complete outsiders to your community, we believe that it could also point to a path for the city to transform its legacy and reputation of distrust in its public decision-making processes. I would first like to acknowledge Plan 3.1, produced by the city's consultant. The city's requirement for community engagement to be a part of the consultant's process was admirable. However, we now know that many residents- However, we now know that many residents of northwest were dissatisfied with the type of community engagement that was conducted. Essentially, the consultant used community engagement to come up with a list of non-negotiables. They assumed that if the design avoided these non-negotiables, then the community would have to be satisfied with the resulting plan. But there's actually much more potential and transformative power in the process of community engagement that cannot be captured simply by making a list of non-negotiables. Our approach was to view the planning process as one of storytelling. My students came into the issue of Evan Spring knowing that it is a charged and controversial topic. They wondered what their role was as outsiders and so they stepped back and asked, what is the underlying problem that we are trying to address? The first story that emerged was one about the pain of urban renewal. My students learned about urban renewal and its lasting scars on the city, but in the beginning, much of it was actually invisible to them. They needed to learn to see what longtime African-American residents see of their city. They had the opportunity to hear the devastating stories shared by residents about the plague of urban renewal, what their families, friends and neighbors endured. These stories inspired them to consider, how do we see what the community of northwest Roanoke sees? We designed two workshops to dive deeper. In our first workshop, we wanted to understand how residents see their own community and the future of Evan Spring. These are not questions that can be answered using rationality alone. They are emotional in nature and so we had the residents tell their stories in listening circles. This is a photo of a listening circle. Residents were asked open-ended questions and after each thought that a resident expressed, one of my students would repeat their story back to them. Through this, the students were learning to exercise their active listening and empathy Through this, the students learned the story of northwest. They learned that despite northwest's reputation as crime-ridden and violent, there is also a deep sense of pride and strong culture of mutual aid that is under-recognized. We learned that Evan Spring represented freedom, youth, independence to the residents. They had beautiful memories of riding bikes, eating fruit from trees and playing in the swimming hole. The vision for Evan Spring is connected to the residents' past experiences of nature and the city and the motivation surrounding Evan Spring today is connected with the betrayal the residents felt associated with urban renewal. At the end of this exercise, we were relieved when we heard the residents say they felt heard and even had fun. We felt we were beginning to understand more of what the problem was. It included feeling devalued, ignored and disrespected by the city's officials who they felt should be representing them. During the second workshop, the students created scenarios for the resident participants to think through. The scenarios not only represented a range of potential outcomes, they were described with both positive and negative media spins. The scenarios were designed to promote deeper thinking about trade-offs, politics, buy right zoning and pathways for community change. Incredibly, the participants reported being able to see the other side of the argument and even realizing that the issue was not Evan Spring per se, but rather a deeper issue of trust and community engagement. My students and I also learned, the process of deeply relating deeply to other people, to be vulnerable in the fact that we actually had no idea if we could really make any difference at all and yet be willing to listen and hold another's pain and another's hope, made us deeply reflect on what the role of community engagement should be. I was so moved when one of my students, just twenty-two years old, came to me with this quotation he found by the theologian C.S. Lewis as a way he thought could guide us. It says, "The rule for all of us is perfectly simple. Do not waste time bothering whether you love your neighbor. Act as if you did. As soon as we do this, we find one of the greatest secrets. When you are behaving as if you loved someone, you will presently come to love him." We know as students and scholars of urban planning that perhaps the decision outcome for Evan Spring would still be a difficult choice between trade-offs, but I think the process, the emotional outcomes and the trust might be better had the community engagement process been different. These are the principles that we think the city could adopt to guide all future community engagement for the purpose of rebuilding trust. These are principles for city leaders to become true advocates, in short, becoming neighbors. One, when I'm sure I know what needs to happen next, I take a look at my assumptions. Two, when I'm judgmental about what is happening, I question my assumptions and open my heart. Three, when chaos breaks out, I stand calm and confident, knowing that something beautiful will emerge beyond what I could have imagined or planned. Four, if I notice I'm trying to control, I let go. Five, when I feel myself wanting to tell others what to do, I ask them what they think is possible. If I, six, if I let ends become more important than means, I step away. Seven, if I begin to doubt, I remember to trust in the collective process. Eight, if this begins to flow, I know I'm meant to do this. Nine, if people are praising me for my work, I know I have failed to make it their vision, their success, excuse me. Ten, I remember that I am working with them to realize their evolving vision, not my The last story I have for you today is one that my students presented back to the Friends of Evan Spring, of their story. They wrote, "Dear Friends of Evan Spring, your story is one of strength, endurance and love. It has a deep history from the vibrant and colorful life of Henry Street, the pain of betrayal, destruction and invisibility, to the neighbors of northwest who plant gardens, care for and mentor children and honor their elders, provide moments of beauty, art and rest. You are already cultivating leadership in exactly the ways of your heroes of the civil rights era. You have sacrificed your time and your passion is courageous. We cannot predict how the struggle for Evan Spring will end, but we do know you will persevere. In times of challenge and controversy, as you look at the long road ahead, remember how far you have come. We hope that our story, our brief overlap in paths will remind you, it is possible to do planning in a different way, in a way which all parties grow and learn together. It is our sincere hope that in our small way, we have modeled that this is possible. We see you and we thank you for the opportunity." At the end of my students' final presentation to the Friends of Evan Spring, many of us were in tears. This is the kind of relationship that the residents we worked with would like to cultivate with their elected officials, government staff.
It's time, time.
Finish.
That's time. Thank you. All due respect. And let me say, there, you're out of order back there. And let me say this, I'm disappointed and all due respect to you, Dr. Lim, I'm disappointed with what Mr. Priti and Ms. Reynolds has presented here. I haven't heard one word about a tree and this is presented to having trees or to talk about trees. I haven't heard one word about trees. And I think if that's what you were brought in to talk about, that's what we, that's what should be done, not to come in and give us a lecture on community engagement. So I just want to make sure, I want to shout it with you. Now, I will go to Mr. Priti and Ms. Moon Reynolds to defend that, but I haven't heard nothing about trees and that's why I thought this was on our agenda to discuss in Evan Spring. All right? Who wants to go first, Mr. Priti or Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I would have appreciated, I think, a better lead-in for that. I tried to speak up earlier and I understand you wanted to go through a certain order. What I was going to ask before this presentation started, because I know that we have heard from a number of people in this audience a number of times, I know that they have my support and maybe some others, but I understand we have twenty people who are signed up here to speak today. We have public hearings that are scheduled for the twelfth and for the twentieth and if you can imagine, it doesn't seem that it's very receptive up here to a lot of what's being spoken on. I would ask respectfully if those individuals who are signed up would be willing to defer to a later date to speak when it'd be officially on the record, give us the time to process what's been presented to us today. We have a lot of business to get to while it may not look like it. I know we've got to go back there and do a lot more. We had a marathon this morning. And that would give us an opportunity to digest what's going on and to contemplate before the twelfth with the planning commission and the twentieth, when it's a formal time for people to come back and really speak to us. We have heard from you over a period of years on this, since before my time sitting on this dais and that is what I was going to communicate before this presentation began as a respectful request, as a way that would help ease some tensions that are clearly in the air on this topic so that we can sit and engage on this together. Now, I will say that when the invitation was made, there was a request for the Friends of Evan Spring to present. I was given no specifics on trees. I understand that's what the title of the professor has so that there may have been some communication confusion in that, but even the letter about sponsorship, I don't have anything that relates directly to trees and I believe what was originally brought to us was a very, very long presentation that included things on trees, heat island effect, community engagement and otherwise. And when we were asked for more time, as a sponsor, I pushed back, we have to be fair to everyone who comes to us. We only allow ten minutes and sometimes you get the grace to go a little bit over ten minutes and other times you don't, but we made clear to our presenter that it had to be ten minutes and to narrow it down to a topic that they wanted to make sure this council could hear and be receptive on because then we can ask questions in response. So unfortunately, what I thought was an invitation made in goodwill to make sure that this public hearing doesn't happen and we never honored the request that we got from the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, just trying to make sure that there is honest community engagement, that people feel heard and that there's built trust between us. So I'm asking the audience today to build trust with me and members of the council. If you sign up to speak, could you please wait to defer to the public hearing and if you don't, after this request now, I understand. Thank you.
I still haven't heard nothing about trees. I understand that. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
I have to just echo what Councilmember Priti said. We were, I was asked if I would be a sponsor for Virginia Tech to come and present out and I told them they only had ten minutes and they wanted longer time, so whatever was in that thirty-minute presentation, they had to will it down and this is what I assumed came out of it. It was to talk about the Evan Spring property, the nature park. It listed all of that, but this is what they presented and I saw on Thursday when I received my packet and based on that, I just wanted to be the supporter of allowing them the opportunity to come before council and that's what my sponsorship represented, allowing Virginia Tech to come and speak on their presentation that they felt that the city had not allowed. They wanted opportunity to be heard, so now they have been heard and the public hearing, as Luke has said, will be held on the twelfth and the twentieth and at that time, those from Evan Spring, Friends of Evan Spring wishes to come and be heard, that will be the platform for them to talk.
Well, I think it's misleading to do certain things regarding saying you're going to do one thing and come here and say "they," which I'm assuming you're talking about the public, want to come and talk about community engagement. That's a mild difference between trees and how trees are going to be removed or what damage is going to do to the community than community engagement, two different distinct things, but that's what you're all saying.
Right, well, I'd never, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I was never told it was specifically on trees. That was never told to me, so I don't know where the presentation on trees came from. That was not told to me.
That was what was told to me when the agenda was being approved, that was what told to me, we're going to talk about trees, fine, no about community engagement, that wasn't brought to us and I think if you're rallying behind a group, I got my concerns of that on council anyway, but that's, you can do that, but let's stay to the issue and the facts that we were going to talk about the trees and that didn't happen. So if this is a backdoor way of trying to get something else done, I don't appreciate it and that's my position as mayor. I like to be advised if what's going to be done, done, not what a group wants to do or somebody wants to do in a backdoor way. With that being said, Madam Clerk, let's recognize the people that's here to speak on Evan Spring.
All right. Our first speaker is Jane Gabrielle, followed by Catherine Katniss.
No, they're going to make, we can comment on that, after that, yeah.
Thank you for hearing me. The engagement techniques Dr. Theo Lim had us...
I can't hear the speaker. Go ahead, ma'am.
The engagement techniques Dr. Theo Lim had us entertain with the Evan Springs group were deeply focused on steering that came from the community up to government rather than from the city down to the people approach to which Roanoke is accustomed. In short, that top-down approach for Evan Springs looked like the city deciding the mixed-use project they wanted, hiring a consultant with no environmental credentials that would deliver just that. Perhaps you really believe you listened to the neighborhood. Friends of Evan Spring canvassing efforts reveal that a majority of neighbors do not know of these plans. Remember the consultant slide that said it is imperative for the city to move toward the people and the citizens to move toward the city? These are my very words in one of my emails to Bill Menick at LPDA. We need you to hear us. The people of northwest Roanoke suffer worse health outcomes than everywhere else in this city. Precious lives are seven to ten years shorter. Part of that is the trees. Let us build something that prioritizes and centers health with the benefit of nature. If this city can find fifty-five million for a highway ramp, they can find fifty-five million to center the health of the northwest quadrant. We do not want this culturally insensitive, environmentally soulless, commercially repetitive, carbon-producing plan lacking not only location intelligence, empathy and imagination, but stewardship for our children. How can you vote to fold this into the 2040 city plan when it is the very antithesis of that guiding tenet? In 2040, and I quote, "The city of Roanoke will boast a clean, resilient environment in which everyone will live and prosper in harmony with nature through innovative, sustainable and resilient practices that nurture community health, embrace recreational opportunities, protect our natural resources, address the local aspects of climate change, support ecosystem services, foster appreciation and understanding of the city's relationship with its natural surroundings," end quote. Shall we just go ahead and include the words "except" in northwest Roanoke? Again, do not waste time bothering whether you love your brother. Act as if you did. Please embrace this work by Dr. Lim and his students. It is transformative for authentic engagement and creative placemaking. And quit tiptoeing around Evan Springs worrying it will become a campaign issue. I'm here to tell you it is. Thank you.
Mayor Lee, is it appropriate if I could just remind the audience, I'm thankful people are here today, but we do not allow cheering, booing, anything of the likes and it'd help us get through our business if you keep any responses to a minimum. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I would respectfully like to take Mr. Priti up on his offer to defer and come back on February twelfth.
The twentieth when you'll come here.
If that's okay. I feel like some of the things that I plan to say, I've heard. I have only lived here two years. I've not been here as long as all of you, so if it's okay, I'd like to defer and speak later. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Ann Miller. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mary Ann Matter.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to ask for your guidance. I'm here today representing, I'm the secretary of the Old Southwest Inc. neighborhood and I was just going to read into the record a letter of support that we have for Evan Springs. Would it be better to wait or would you just like, it's just a short letter, it's up to you, what you think is best.
Either way, you can say it to us now, but you're going to... Either way, you can say it to us now, but you're going to need to show up on the 12th to the Planning Commission if you actually want it in their record.
Okay. So that would be better to...
Let me understand you. What are you doing? What are you saying today?
I'd like to enter into the record a letter of support from our neighborhood, Old Southwest Inc., to the Friends of Evan Springs. And I have some language in this letter and a copy of the letter I can give you as well. But I'm happy to wait whenever it's most appropriate.
All right. Well, you can leave that with the city administration.
Okay. And then come on the 12th to the planning? Thank you. Is it okay to bring this over?
They'll take it for you.
The next speaker is Ginny Waring.
I'm sort of appalled at the apparent attitude this council has made during its remarks about Evan Spring. I would defer my remarks, but I'm afraid that if council hasn't already made up its mind about Evan Spring, that it would be by February 20th. I am a member of the EEAB Trust Subcommittee, and our Trust Subcommittee was working very hard to determine how to build trust between our citizens, most importantly, our Northwest citizens, who were ravaged by Gainesboro destruction years ago. It's been more than 50 or 60 years, and that is still a problem in our city. We were working toward finding an apology that the city could make. No doubt, you all as city council did not make the decisions 50 and 60 years ago, but there is no denying that you have that to deal with. That is your truth. The Trust Subcommittee was working to find an apology and some action that it could do to put that apology into solid ground, that it wasn't just mere words, that you really meant it, that you were saying that you were sad about what happened in the past. Now we have a situation with Evan Spring where trust is clearly in play. I am disappointed that Dr. Lim couldn't finish his remarks. He had originally asked for 30 minutes. He got 10, and he was cut off. The situation in Evan Spring has put a fork in the road for the city council. Are you going to keep Evan Spring as it is now? Are you going to rezone it for commercial development? Are you going to approve a concept plan? How do you balance the citizen trust with real estate and sales tax? How does the city demonstrate that it sincerely cares about Northwest Roanoke and its neighbors around Evan Spring? Is trust centrally important to Evan Spring? If you're going to approve a concept plan, which the Planning Commission seems perched planned to do, you're going to need to tell the people what the concept plan is. Why is it appropriate? Why does it possibly meet their objections? Communication here is the key. There will be a lack of trust that'll last you another 50 years if you don't communicate with the people. I hope that there's no rush to judgment here, and that if you find that there are things to consider that you have not considered, particularly with Dr. Lim's comments on how to engage with the community, that you will postpone your vote, and you will not vote February 20th to develop Evan Spring. So I ask that you don't make Evan Spring a figurative bulldozer like the bulldozer that bulldozed the Tribune. Thank you.
Let me correct you on one thing, ma'am. Dr. Lim, Dr. Lim did not have 30 minutes.
No, sir. We had asked for 30 minutes, and we were only given 10.
Well, we don't give people 30 minutes to come up and speak when they're brought up. He has 10 minutes, like 10 minutes rather than three.
I understand if he had the full 30 minutes, you might have heard about the trees. Thank you.
No, I don't think the last is appropriate. I think what the mayor's trying to communicate, anyone that we invite, we all have the same policies, a 10-minute presentation, and that's what he's trying to reaffirm.
I appreciate you entertaining that. But let me, I'll defend my position. I appreciate that, okay? All right. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Virginia Sweet.
I too would defer, but I am bringing petitions from 1,342 people who agree that Evan Springs needs to be preserved. And I was in on the meeting when Dr. Lim's presentation was discussed. And what has, have you not heard? You've heard about trees, you've heard about health, you've heard about bulldozers, you've heard about a lot of things, but not community engagement. That's why it was signaled out when we realized he only had 10 minutes. I was also here at the council meeting when Preston Park School had a beautiful presentation that lasted 30 minutes with PowerPoint and Dr. White addressing, and a whole roomful of PTA members, moms, kids, all of that. We didn't understand why we were not granted 30 minutes, and then we came back and asked for 30 minutes. We weren't guaranteed that. But I will tell you that there are at least 1,342 other people in this community who would like to see that land preserved. It could be a beautiful nature park. It could be an ecological learning lab from everybody from Virginia Tech and Hollins and Virginia Western down to elementary schools. It could have a boardwalk where there are people who love to watch the birds, come and watch the birds. It could be an extension of the greenway, particularly if Lick Run were cleaned up. It could also be a wonderful place just to meditate. The tree canopy is now mitigating the heat index and the flooding. In the proposal that the consultants brought forward, there will be no tree canopy. They might plant cute new little trees that take 20 to 40 years to grow, but the tree canopy is all that is left to protect that area of Northwest. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jane Gabrielle. No, we've already done that one. We have some duplications here.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members. I am Joanne Hayden, a friend of Evan Spring and a concerned citizen of Roanoke City. In my reading on the internet, I have learned that Evan Spring can be considered as an urban greenfield. It is given this name because it is land that has never been developed or has never had any substantial buildings constructed on it. I feel that any development on Evan Spring should not, I'm sorry, should be designed to make it a green space for the enjoyment of its natural beauty and the health benefits it provides for the citizens who live adjacent as well as other citizens in the city and visitors. Some of the health benefits are improvement of air quality by cooling the area's temperature, which studies have proven decreases health-related illnesses, reduction of noise from high traffic of the 581 internet interstate, and pollution from the increase of carbon dioxide produced by the vehicles that travel the interstate which transverses through our city. In addition to the health benefits of Evan Spring, it has the ability to be used as a natural area of low-impact activities, such as walking and running paths, interconnecting trails for hiking, and educational learning destination for our city school students and teachers, bird watching, and a serene lake area to observe nature. I believe that Evan Springs could also be a place for visitors to enjoy its natural beauty and possibility of exercise opportunities due to its proximity to the hotels at Valleyview Mall. Visitors could walk over the footbridge that spans over 581 and be in an environment close to their accommodations. There are more possibilities for the use of the Evan Spring property than to increase health issues for residents who live adjacent to the area, kill off the wildlife, destroy the tree canopy, cut down trees that took hundreds of years to grow, cover up the land with concrete asphalt, increase the runoff that will cause flooding in downtown Roanoke. All these negative approaches that will occur if development happens for the almighty dollar that has no concern, and has no concern for the human factor due to its location in Roanoke. Please envision a better way to utilize the assets of Evan Spring for the good of the city and its residents. Thank you.
Jerome Hayden.
Mayor, city council, police chief. I am Jerome Hayden, a member of Friends of Evan Spring, and I would like to share some of my concerns with the possible development of Evan Spring. I've had the opportunity to walk this beautiful property and to stand by the lake that is formed by the clear water that bubbles out of the ground from the spring. I understand that it is private property, and I left it as I found it with only a few of my shoe prints in the muddy area at the edge of the lake. I wanted to make sure I made this statement just in case the police chief was attending this city council session. Being able to drive down Fairland Road, get out of my car, walk into the wooded area, and enjoy the visual pleasure of a lake without leaving an urban environment is a very unusual opportunity. Evan Spring is a very special place. It is a peaceful, natural habitat filled with birds, deer, groundhogs, other wildlife that live in the trees and brush throughout the property. Lick Run moves slowly through the property on the descent toward downtown Roanoke. In some areas, it creates grogling sounds, and in other places, it shares trickling sounds as it moves quickly over the tarred rocky areas. This type of environment does not just happen in a short time span. It took hundreds of years, hundreds of years for the large diverse tree canopy to grow, to provide shelter and food for many other animals that inhabit Evan Springs. This is their home. Where would they go if the trees are cut down? Where would they go if the bulldozers cut through the soil? Will they be herded up and taken to some other location? Or will they become roadkill lying on the sides of Cold Road and Hurstburger Road dead as they try to find a safe place to live? What would happen if asphalt streets, asphalt parking areas, cement curves, brick and mortar buildings are constructed, creating runoff that would cause the increase in the amounts of water that traveled down, downward, excuse me, Roanoke causing more flooding? I'm asking, again, I'm asking that the city council considers developing Evan Spring that you think critically regarding the negative ramifications that may occur in the wildlife, tree canopy, and engagement organisms that may be in the area. Also, Evan Spring as a green space provides health benefits to our citizens that live in the neighborhood adjacent to Evan Spring. Therefore, I am against Evan Spring being developed. Thank you so much.
And the last speaker I have is Dr. Brenda Hale.
I bring you greetings from the Roanoke branch NAACP and the Roanoke NAACP Youth Council, the best youth council in the state of Virginia. There are over 200 branches of NAACP branches in this state, and we have one of the top three branches and the best youth council. Two days ago, our youth council members held a news conference because they felt like their voices were not being heard related to the issues of Evan Springs. And they presented so eloquently, like we have trained them to be leaders now and in the future. They had significant issues, and some of them you've heard already, so I'm not going to repeat that. Folks, there are enough significant reasons why we are out here with this clarion call. Do not abuse, do not mistreat, do not concrete over Evan Spring. The last bastion of natural wetlands in the Roanoke Valley. Years ago, now Luke and Pete, y'all too young to know about this. There was a commercial on TV, and it showed a Native American with tears in his eyes standing by the waterway and surrounded by trash, surrounded by looking at what had been done to destroy the natural water, the flora, the canopy, and all of these things that happen when you have a natural spring. I gotta pick it up. Can you just imagine that? Him standing over at Evan Springs. This is a pristine area that we're talking about. Folks, there are so many other options. There are so many other things that can be done. Today, I implore you to govern by the means of the people, by the people, for the people. Respect is two-way. It's a two-way street when it comes to respect. I respect y'all, so therefore I know you do respect me. I thank you for that. But please, evaluate this very, very carefully, because there is so much at stake. The future of our young people, their future now and in their future, and the future generations to come. Thank you for this opportunity, and I will be back.
That was the last speaker.
All right. Thank you. All right, members of council, I recognize Mr. Volsom, who wanted to make a comment.
I appreciate everybody who's come here today to talk about Evan Springs. I do feel that there is a lot of misinformation about what is going on here. I keep hearing the term urban renewal thrown around. This is not the definition of urban renewal. This is a, an adaption of a neighborhood plan. We're not rezoning, like they said in the Roanoke Times. We are not in cahoots with a developer. We don't even know if there is one. We don't even know if there is one. We don't have $55 million for a bridge. That's if in the future it may happen. There are a lot of things that have to happen for this plan to go into place. And as a city, I actually appreciate what our city manager had done, which is to go and get that community engagement beforehand, to get, I've been to the community meetings myself. I've seen them, so I know they happened, and I know that we have plenty of information from those community engagement outreaches. There are other places in Roanoke that can be redeveloped, and as a council member, that's what I'm working on. I have called Valley View Mall to see if what we can do to start to redevelop areas like that, but me calling them and getting on board with that isn't going to make them do it. So I'm, we can make those efforts here on city council, but we can't force people to. Just like we can't force people that own this property to do something, they own it. They have the rights to it. If they want to go and make it as single-family homes right now, they could go and do that. What we're trying to do is mitigate what impacts it will have to the community. And I think there'll be some, ultimately, some changes to what we see in the plan that's already been given from the consultants. I know that I'm going to be asking for some amendments to it as well to create more open green space. But again, this is not urban renewal. It is nowhere near what we did back in the 1950s and 60s when this council sat here and said, "We are going to come and take your land, and we're going to move you out because of your color of your skin." That is not what is happening here. What we have done is used our city manager and administration to get as much information to help us make the best decision about what this area could look like in the future. Because we don't own it, and we don't have as much control as I wish we did over it. So I thank you again for coming and doing what you do with advocating for Evan Springs. I understand. So thank you for doing that, and I just wanted to clear that up, that this is not urban renewal. We are not rezoning this property. We are trying to be as diligent as we can about what we do with this area. Thank you.
Okay. That is, sure.
Just to respond, I guess, to what you said, and not to comment on urban renewal in any way. I appreciated the presentation, early did, on community engagement and really focusing on the theme of which we need to build trust. And thank you for those who deferred because they know we're going to hear about this at least one more time in the future as we've heard about it in the past. And thank you for respecting my wishes there and trying to build trust in that way. But really, what I think has been happening over the past two years is just trying to figure out how do we make sure that we hear each other and that we hear each other and we're able to move our positions in a way that's positive for our growth. I want to thank the speakers that came up and spoke in a positive fashion to do that. And I hope that direction will go moving forward. But even before I got on council, I mean, I didn't feel like this started from a place of trust, and it's been hard to get to a place of that from where it began. I, I've been following this topic for years. I saw something on the agenda one day about engaging with people to enter into a contract to hire someone, to develop a plan, not to develop, but to develop a plan. And when I went to the neighborhood to ask people, no one who lived in that neighborhood knew that we were going to be voting on it. So I asked them to come, and I said, "Just have an opportunity to share your thoughts before they even vote to spend this money." And from that point in time, I think it's been hard to get to a place of trust together. I think that some of the community engagements have been earnest to get there, but what their goal is may not be the same goal as a lot of the people in the neighborhood. And they're trying to find this middle ground. So my hope is that going forward with this, especially as people craft their remarks for the 12th and the 20th, please try to do so in a respectful way. No matter what happens here, if we adopt this plan or we do not, we all still have to live here. And it's important because we're going to see each other in the grocery store and on the street. And I just want to make sure that we keep everything positive in that aspect from there going forward, and to thank everyone for coming today.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming and taking time to share your thoughts, and Dr. Lem for sharing a bit about community engagement. I think that there are a lot of really good and hopeful models for community engagement, and I think it's important that we utilize as many of those as we can. And I think that, as Peter said, many effective ones have been utilized, and this is another one that has proven to be effective in terms of listening to perhaps some voices that weren't heard otherwise. I appreciate that there's a lot of focus on land and the importance of land and the healing qualities of land. None of us fully knows the story, the full story, of this land. It goes back way before any of us, and its roots are very deep. Native Americans were here. We know that. We know that there were multiple tribal peoples that were here. We don't know their stories. It'd be nice to know their stories so that we could add that to the mix. I have yet to hear the story of the people who own the land. I don't know much about their families. I don't know about what they've experienced on the land, how it came to be in their history. And so to me, that's a missing story. If we're, I'd like to hear that as part of the mix. I don't know that I will, but I'd like to. And I also want to say that I agree that storytelling is a contributor to healing, and I think that we need to model healing practices throughout this process. Because as Luke said, we are still in community together. Whatever happens in this regard, we are still in community together, and we need to find ways to have healthy conversation with each other, even in disagreements, and find healing pathways forward. And what has been uncovered, I think, and uprooted in a way, is that there's a lot of healing that hasn't happened, a lot of trauma that hasn't been addressed. And so my concern is that if we just keep layering that on without continuing to do the work of healing throughout the decisions that we make, that we've got a missed opportunity. I think everybody on this council cares about the healing and wholeness of our city. I have no doubt about that. I really do. And this is probably one of the hardest decisions any of us will make, and we make a lot of hard decisions. But there's a complexity to it that is part of the healing. So I would just encourage us as a city to think about the wholeness of our city and how these healing practices that are emerging, not only from the assets of the land, but through the conversations and the engagement that's happening, that these are all parts of guiding us toward a healthier future as a community. And lastly, I'll say, it takes courage to share our stories. It takes courage to build trust. If we can all make a commitment as citizens to do that and as leaders, which I think we are, let this not be the end of that work. We have to keep doing this work over time because history keeps revealing itself. And just when we think we've figured out everything there is to know about a place or a piece of land or an experience, more is uncovered because more people learn about it and realize they have a connection to it. So let's please remember that we're all connected and that we can find a way forward, and let's remember to honor each other in what we agree on and even in what we disagree on. So thank you all very much for being here today.
Anybody else?
I think Ms. Moon had something, but she stepped out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to echo everything my colleagues have said. Really, the first thing I want to do is thank you all for coming out, taking the time out of your days to come and express yourselves to us. I can echo just about every one of my colleagues saying that this has really been challenging, a lot of difficult conversations. I have friends who come to me who are white and say, "You know, I feel really bad about what happened, you know, years ago." So we're dealing with guilt. We're looking at trauma from some of the folks in the black community. So there's all kinds of things that we're dealing with. But the one thing that I want us to take away from this is what Mr. Volsen said. We are also dealing with a lot of misinformation. And, you know, as I listened to some of the speakers, you know, you said you just kind of cringe because you think that is certainly not correct, and you don't know where this information is coming from. So, you know, I'd ask that you certainly bear with us, and if you have any questions, you can direct them to me. My email and phone number is on the website, and if I don't know the answer, I will try to get it for you because I think it's imperative that we move forward with accurate information. I think that's going to be important in all of our decision-making, and so I just want you to take that away. If you have questions or any concerns that you think have not been answered by the admin or by any of us, email me, and I will make sure that we get you a good answer because I think that is important. And again, thank you all for coming out. Thank you, Mayor, for your patience with us, and I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Let me just say that, no, sir, you're not on the agenda. Did you sign up to speak?
No, but the obvious resolution made is the city purchased the land on a fair market value.
Okay, well, that's, you have signed up to speak. Let me just say that this item will be going through the Planning Commission. I think that meeting is February 12th. That's when they'll come and share with us and make a recommendation to us. And following that recommendation, we'll have a public hearing at least on the 20th, and we'll make a decision on one way or the other. All right, so that's where we are in this process, and it's one that we use all the time, nothing new about that. All right, the 12th and the 20th. But the 12th is when the Planning Commission will review everything and give us a recommendation about that time. All right, thank you all, and that concludes this issue of Evan Springs. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of city manager. All right, I'm pleased at this time to recognize the city manager who will lead us in the briefings that will be coming up.
Thank you, Mayor and councilman. There are two briefings, and the first we'll begin with is the briefing on zoning reform. This is the next step in this process. This is to, you all provided back in January, kind of a memo of possible changes and ideas. This is kind of that next step to get a little more formality to those, and then it'll start its actual formal process with this. And I know that Chris and Wayne will go into more detail on this, but there's two things I want to highlight with this. One is the principal reason that these have been undertaken by the staff is for two reasons. One of those is in our continued effort to try to actually advance on the support of the production of more affordable housing. So that's number one. And the second part of it is also to systematically, to the extent we're able to go through our ordinances and practices and remove discriminatory practices that we believe still exist within those. Those are the two driving objectives associated with these. This is only the latest in a series of reform that you'll see, again, explained here in just a moment. It was 2020 when Plan 2040 was adopted, and one year later, we actually enacted the first round of zoning reform. You actually enacted the first round of zoning reform one year after the plan was adopted. And actually, very shortly after that, we started seeing development occur because of it. The example I often use is the zoning reform that took place that actually enabled the redevelopment of the Sheraton Hotel property into the apartments that are currently nearing completion, in some cases are completed on those. So I just wanted to point out that even though, you know, we're now in 2024 with these, this is just the latest of a collection of zoning reforms that have been underway since the master plan or since the comprehensive plan was adopted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Bob. And that's new, Mayor, members of city council. This is an exciting time and proud time, I think, for Roanoke, for us to be at this point. Many people are, many localities around the United States are on this journey, and some are farther along than others. And in fact, we did a presentation at the State Planning Conference, which was in Roanoke. I think Vice Mayor Cobb and Mr. Volsen were able to attend that, as well as the city manager. One of the sessions that we had was a joint session with Arlington, with Charlottesville, and with Jillian Moore here, who talked about where we are in our relative journeys on zoning reform. And we're all grappling with how we address our affordable housing crisis and indeed just a plain housing crisis. And that's all over the United States. There's not anything unique about Roanoke. Took a while to get here, and it took a while after the recession, which in part caused the reduction in production of housing. And so it's made its way to our community. And about the middle teens, 2015, 2018, as we started working on the comprehensive plan, we really started to see that those issues arrived in Roanoke. Not that they weren't there, but they really started becoming acute. And so we have been working on this for years and years and years, so it's not a new thing that we've come up with. And it is an incremental approach that we're bringing to bear. We did adopt, or city council adopted, a comprehensive plan in 2020. We followed up the following year with the first set or first phase of zoning amendments, which, as Bob mentioned, were impactful, almost immediately resulted in several hundred new housing units getting created because we kind of removed a barrier. Others are more long-term. This set of amendments that other staff will describe is, will be more impactful and probably have a slower burn in terms of its impact because zoning ordinances work, we need, you know, we think about, we turn on a switch and all this unmet demand will flow out, and it just takes a while. So when we, when we turn on or enable or remove a barrier, it takes a while for that to take hold. And so we're doing things now. We're planting trees that we will probably not enjoy the shade of necessarily. So that's, that's an important part about the expectations here because change because we are fully developed is slow here in Roanoke by nature. So recovery, and what you see in the background is one of the boards, we've had several open houses with both our comprehensive plan and with our zoning reform package. What we did back in September and October was go out to the community and to all of our libraries and talk about what are issues that we're seeing and to talk about some ideas that we really didn't have baked yet at that point. We just had some ideas that we'd like to put forward and have a discussion on with the community. So we're now prepared. We have specific items that we are proposing as changes for the zoning ordinance, and we will, again, go back out to the community. And we're doing it in an open house format because zoning is complicated. Let's just face it, it's difficult to understand the comprehensive nature of all these changes that we're taking, but it's really easy for us to talk to a resident or a business owner or some other stakeholder about how it affects them. And so we will have planners at these open houses, multiple planners, that people can come in and spend, you know, 15 minutes or an hour if need be to talk about what the impact may be, so we can have deep conversations with people. We also have created on our planroanoke.org website the details. We put the details and posted them up there. And so as people have questions, they can get in touch with us. We're on tour right now, so if, I'll put that in, that opportunity out there to folks who are watching, if you want me to come out and speak with them individually or as a group, we are doing that. I did that yesterday morning to a group at St. John's, and we'll do one later on next week. So glad to do that and talk about this, again, what will be an impactful over time change that we're making. So where are we on the timeline? As I said, we started working probably back in 2018 on some of the engagement with the comprehensive plan. We're on the second round of zoning reform. We won't be done. This will be a big deal, but we will still have more to do. There are some things that the General Assembly is sorting out now with, in relationship to inclusionary zoning, that is, set asides for, say, an apartment, a certain number of units. So we'd like to... So we'd like to see the dust settle on that, and also get some other things in place with our Affordable Housing Development Fund, because that ends up being a receiver if somebody wants to buy or pay, make a payment in lieu of providing those units. So just some items. This, this package of zoning amendments will check a lot of boxes for us as a community in terms of how we're implementing our comprehensive plan. And so, and a lot of them are related to interwoven equity, that part, that theme of the plan. So we talk about barriers to housing choice. We talk about affordable housing options in every, every neighborhood. And so each neighborhood can be inclusive and livable. And another big thing that you'll see in here that we'll talk about is vulnerable populations. And we talked at the housing conference, we had a session on this at the housing conference, the Roanoke Regional Housing Conference, about how our zoning ordinances really discriminate against and vulnerable populations that, based on the people, the nature of the people, what their conditions are, whether they were, whether they have been incarcerated, whether they've been a victim of domestic violence, whether they've been homeless. And we really want to remove those elements from our zoning ordinance, because we really think that they cause harm ultimately to our community and its people. So, let's see, let's see. And so we've had a number of housing studies over the past couple of years to help us understand our problem. One of the things that has been eye-opening for me is to understand that we have a real mismatch in our housing. In other words, people with higher incomes are living in lower income housing, to really put it in. And so even creating new housing units that are, you know, $1,500 a month or $2,000 a month even, will help our housing market throughout the, all tiers of income. Because people are just gobbling up whatever housing is out there, because it's so scarce. And people with high incomes can afford all the housing, right? So, and so that's an important thing to remember. And there's also data from other localities that back this, localities in the United States that back this assertion up. And we're all coming to the same conclusion that more housing production is what we need to focus on, regardless of its price point. One of the stats, how are we going to know whether we're having an impact? That second, cost burdening, that's, those are people who are paying 30% or more of their income on housing. And if you can imagine, if you could do the math in your own personal situation, that would hurt. I don't care who you are. And that applies to both homeowners and the rental market. We have a very scary large amount of households in Roanoke that are paying 30% or more, in some cases, 50% or more of their income. So they are very, very close, right on the edge, and vulnerable to becoming evicted or becoming one of our, becoming part of the homeless population. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We've got, we've got a slew of certified zoning administrators. We have a very, very highly professional staff that are going to walk you through some of the changes. They are technical. Glad to, at some, you know, stop them if you want a further explanation of what's going on, so, because this is important for us to get the details right with you. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jillian Papa-More, and she is our deputy director.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. We're not going to get totally technical just yet, but we will get very, very technical very quickly. Before we get completely technical, I just wanted to address and reiterate again why we believe zoning reform is needed. There are so many issues that intersect with the need for zoning reform and ultimately looking at breaking down those regulatory barriers that stand in the way of producing more housing. It is those regulatory barriers that we've, we've alluded to that increase the cost of housing and make it more expensive to build. We're looking at how these reforms can bolster our local economy. Zoning has a relationship to expanding access to earning a living through establishing a business, access to childcare, and the ability to live near your employment. We've talked about addressing inequities within our community, as well as connecting individuals to specific housing stability. I did want to expand upon one particular intersection that is near and dear to my heart, which is looking at the connection to, and the correlation between the physical environment and where people live, work, and play, and their quality of life, and specifically to the issue of housing security, and how that relates to healthy development of the well-being of children. And this is something that the National League of Cities is exploring and expanding on even further. And I bring that up today because, as Chris said, this is going to be a slow burn, but if we're brave enough to do this work, this will affect the generations to come. I'll close by saying, and I didn't plan to address this, but just given the content that occurred today, before I introduce Philip and Brittany, I want you to know that where they're coming from as planners. They, we are certified professional planners. We're guided by a certain standard of ethics. I just happen to have the ethics sitting right here, which sounds very nerdy and technical, but, and those are, people who participate, and these are from, directly from the AICP Code of Ethics. People who participate in the planning process shall continuously pursue and faithfully serve the public interest. We also have to have a special concern for the long-range consequences of past and present actions. We also are, must pay special attention to the interrelatedness of the decisions and their unintended consequences. So I just want to outline that, and so that you all know where these professionals are coming from, and that it is from a space of compassion, and that we believe we're pursuing the, the public interest faithfully, according to our profession. So with that, we'll get technical now. Enough feelings.
Thank you all. I'm Philip Moore, zoning administrator for the city. I want to share with you now the specific proposals that we've put together, coming out of the public meeting process that we began in September and October of this year. So the first proposal that we have here is to regulate dwelling as a land use. This amendment removes regulation by housing type, and instead lists dwelling as a permitted use in all districts. So right now, the zoning ordinance use table is stratified as far as dwelling units go. We have multifamily, we have row house, townhouse, various different housing types listed in the use table. What we're proposing here is to simply list dwelling as the use type, and then regulate some of the more specific housing types through supplemental regulations and also through the dimensional regulation table, which I'll get to here in a minute. The amendment, the amended code relies more properly on the dimensional regulations in section 36.2-312 to control how many dwelling units can be created or are permitted on a given lot. There will be a general increase in the number of dwellings permitted per lot across all residential zoning districts, with additional dwellings permitted on corner lots. And we thought that that was appropriate because on corner lots, you have the ability to park more cars on the intersecting street. And you can see this traditionally throughout our historic neighborhoods in the city of Roanoke. You see a lot of apartment buildings located historically on, on corner lots. The required lot area per dwelling unit and an absolute cap on the number of dwellings would work together to determine the number of dwellings permitted on a given lot within a specified zoning district. This approach moves away from regulating the type of housing permitted, and instead various housing types may or may not be permitted based on the number of dwellings permitted on an individual lot within the zoning district. And again, that would be handled through the dimensional regulation table, which you can see listed up here on section 36.2-312.
Is there, before you go, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask if, is there a map someplace that tells us where these districts are?
Absolutely, yes. We host our zoning map online. It's part of the GIS website, but there's a specific layer on that web, that GIS website that you can turn on to view where all of the different zoning districts are located. And Ms. Whiteboard, if you need help navigating that, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I was just on there, there's something else, but I didn't see that.
I can help you.
So I just clicked on the map or something. There's layers.
Yeah, I can help you with that specifically.
Yeah, Peter just said I need to click on layers, so I'll click on layers.
Okay.
I got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was trying to help her first.
Fair enough. The second, the second large change is that we want to regulate specific dwelling types through supplemental regulations. The idea here is that we want to be able to create housing that fits within the context of the existing neighborhoods that we live in. And so the proposed code will classify new and existing dwelling types in order to manage the form, location, and orientation of structures so that they'll be compatible in those settings. One of the things that we heard out, and that I want to highlight, is that several members of council during our last batch of text amendments brought it to staff's attention that there was an issue with separately metering accessory dwelling units, and our requirement that these accessory dwelling units could not be separately metered. We have made a change to remove that requirement, so that now accessory dwelling units can be separately metered. I just wanted to highlight that, that point. We've also added cottage court development types, meaning tiny homes arranged, multiple tiny homes arranged around a common courtyard on an otherwise single lot. The supplemental regulations that we have recommended ensure compatibility in form of this type of development with, within the residential neighborhoods that currently exist in Roanoke. Same thing can be said for one and two dwelling buildings and single facade apartment buildings. Some of these are, are housing forms that we already acknowledge in the zoning ordinance, but some of these are things that we would like to see developed again in our single-family residential neighborhoods. So we've added definitions for these housing types and have allowed them through these supplemental regulations and through the, the changes to the use table. The last element here is that we want to ensure that the city uses our remaining vacant residentially zoned land efficiently. This proposal will make changes to the dimensional regulations of each residential zoning district that would allow for more efficient development of the, that limited vacant land. Roanoke is nearly built out, which creates issues when faced with our housing deficit. And so of the very little amount of vacant land we still have left, we need to use it as efficiently and as effectively as we can in order to address the housing issues we're experiencing. Specifically, the changes included are the reduction of lot area per dwelling unit requirements, and also reduction of minimum lot sizes. I'm going to hand it over now to my colleague, Brittany Gardner, who is the deputy zoning administrator.
So we also have a number of changes as it relates to how we define things within the zoning ordinance. The first definition, we're looking at changing, oh, let me change this. There we go. We're going to look at redefining household. That would be a definition that we would be adding. That would include our current definition for family, and it would also include non-family living arrangements up to eight individuals. There's also some federally defined living arrangements that are currently within our ordinance under family that will be carried over as well, and that is up to eight non-related individuals within those federally defined living arrangements. The second definition we're looking at changing is group care facility. There are a number of definitions under that kind of umbrella. Chris touched on this, is it's going to separate people based on their backgrounds. So if you're a veteran, if you're a victim of domestic abuse, if you have a disability, it's going to separate all those different backgrounds of people. And we want to move away from zoning people and actually look at what is the use that is taking place on the property. So those definitions would be combined into a group living definition, and you can see in this table the zoning districts where that would be permitted. And then the last definition we're looking at changing is going to be group care facility, transitional living facility. So under this definition, that is where we have our emergency housing services for homeless individuals. So we'd be splitting that into two definitions. There would be a community housing services definition, as well as a regional housing services. So the community housing services would be small scale. That would be a maximum of 12 individuals that would be assisted under that definition. And that's in our multipurpose districts, it's permitted in most of those. And then there would be regional housing services, which is for a quantity larger than those 12 individuals. There's not a max on it, but it would only be permitted in our institutional planned unit development district, and it would also be by special exception. So I'm going to hand it to Wayne for some other amendments that are proposed.
And mine will be short. Most of our changes did focus on housing and how we can improve housing. We did have some other changes to the zoning districts that helped us use land more efficiently. One of those was looking at our planned unit development districts, particularly the mixed pud and allowing gasoline stations, and creating some guidelines for that, so that we get the type of developments that we want. The big one on this list is the creation of an urban center district. So this would be a new zoning district. You may know, or you soon will see in front of you next council meeting, where we are looking at the Riverdale area, the viscose plant, and zoning that to downtown. We're sort of had that in mind to do it as a placeholder, because we want that type of development intensity. We want to be able to do some of the things, the flexibility that's allowed in downtown, but Riverdale itself is not downtown. And so we wanted to do is go back and look at, well, how can we have that type of development pattern in an area that's not downtown? And so when we looked at the urban center in developing that district, we basically looked at the downtown zoning district, what's allowed there. We looked at urban flex, which is another district that's very similar, and we sort of married the two, kind of split the difference, if you will. So one of the things that the urban center allows, it allows a lot of the type development you would expect in downtown, but it also allows some things like manufacturing. So you have a little bit more of an industrial flair there, potential for that. So we think that'll be valuable. Riverdale's, we see a mix of uses there. It may be valuable in the future in other districts. You know, currently, right now, South Jefferson Street has a portion that's downtown, but there's been some talk if there were labs, or there was some sort of manufacturing that comes from all the research that's happening there, perhaps that downtown zoning district wouldn't fit. So this gives us that option if we ever come to that, where we might look towards the urban center. So that's the urban center district.
Wayne, where do you go?
Yes, sir.
Now, I mean, make sure, again, Riverdale is not part of the urban center.
So the next week, or later this month, two weeks, you'll, you'll be seeing our proposal to rezone it to downtown. And we're going to do that as sort of a temporary use, with the idea that once we create this urban center, we're going to come back and sort of seek rezoning to urban center.
Urban flex, will it be then urban flex at that point?
Well, it's actually urban center. It's a new district. It builds off of urban flex, and it's closer to downtown from where urban flex would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we just want to go over the public outreach that we've had. So this is the public outreach that has occurred since our last briefing. So we had six open house meetings at each of the library branches. So, we had six open house meetings at each of the library branches. We also had an online survey available for those who could not attend an open house meeting. We've got our Plan Runer page. We've been advertising through social media as well as RBTV message boards. Our Office of Community Engagement also has a message board that runs at bus stations and other places. We also have a sign campaign, and Chris said we're on tour, so I guess this is our tour merchandise. We have T-shirts as well.
We didn't get one of those.
Oh, we got to get you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take a sign, too.
So, we can hook you up with that, and that's reasons that we are trying to reach out to folks that maybe otherwise aren't chronically online like some of us and can see, you know, it's in people's yards, people walking around.
Can you tell me how many you had at the in-person meetings? What kind of crowds you had or participation?
Oh, I don't have the exact numbers. Just roughly, just-
I would roughly say 15 to 20.
At each of the six meetings?
On average, yes, ma'am.
And then, we do have a second round coming up, starting this week, starting Wednesday on the 7th. We are going to have again another round of public meetings at each of the public libraries, and we also have a virtual meeting, again, to make sure we reach folks that cannot attend those in-person meetings. And I will give it back to Philip to talk about our timeline.
Okay, so, just kind of a brief update on where we are on the timeline. We've already talked through some of this. City staff began this work back in spring of last year, really starting to explore, research, and kind of benchmark other communities and what's, some things that might work here in our city might be. Then, we held six public open house meetings from September to October to really get some feedback from the community about those ideas that we, we thought would work well here. Over the course of the next two months, in November and December, staff really actually sat down with our zoning ordinance to understand and start to develop the actual text changes to the code in order to achieve sort of what we talked about during those meetings. And so, coming out of that, we now have those created. And so, in the month of February, we have seven public meetings scheduled, as Brittany just mentioned. All, we're going to hit all the branch libraries and actually have a virtual meeting online for those folks that are unable to attend in person. So, that's sort of where we are right now. We're hoping to put this before you all, you know, if you all are so willing, in March to hopefully get a vote on, on these text amendments. I think that's it for us. Chris, did you want to wrap up with any?
Yeah, thank you, Philip. And, and, and just to wrap up, as I said, Arlington and Charlottesville are compatriots or colleagues at the Planning Conference, did adopt theirs in November, and Arlington did, and Charlottesville did theirs in December. And so, we hope that we will be the leaders in all of southwestern Virginia to do this because we believe if, if ever a locality, they ought to be doing this at some point. And so, we, we're glad to be leading the way, and we, we think it's the right thing to do ultimately. And so, once we, once we complete our set of open houses, we'll, we'll, we'll make modifications if any are warranted. And if any of you want to have questions, obviously, get in touch with us, the staff, and we're glad to field those. Couple of things I just wanted to point out as resources for both you and anybody watching. We have, I'm sorry, we need to get to the, yeah, Plan Roanoke. There it is. Whoop, it's already in there. Yep. That's it. Yeah. So, so we've got this, this website set up. It's got lots of information. It's got all the particulars. So, it sort of works from the general, why are we doing this, putting this package together to the very technical things that Philip and Brittany shared on each part of the, of the code. So, again, this staff has been so great. They've been working together as a team to put these together, working with the city attorney's office, appreciate all that support, and with Laura Carini. And so, we, it's all kind of coming together, and we feel really good about it and appreciate your support along the way, and Bob's support, and the administration's support. So, we're here to answer questions if you have them right now. I cannot believe we actually got through this presentation in 30 minutes. I think, I think we made it, so.
And Mayor, if I did, since Chris was thanking everybody, I do want to thank Chris for his leadership on this also. I was actually just Friday reading an article about these same efforts that are going on in Austin, Texas, and Austin has had multiple tries at this. They've had them, they've had litigation over it quite a bit. They finally got something passed, and interestingly, one of the things I pointed out in this particular critique that they thought was going to make it less effective are actually items that this staff has made sure are covered in ours. For example, dealing with setbacks and other kinds of things that you can't just say, you can put more houses on a lot than you could before and not address those other kinds of issues. So, I want to thank Chris and his staff for the comprehensiveness of what they've done and the leadership that they've taken with this. So, thank you.
May I just say?
Aye. Thank you. All right.
He didn't hear my name.
Oh, no, I was, I was just saying, I wanted to say something.
Yeah, I did, too. Go ahead, Luke.
Thank you for putting this together. A question just about timeline, and then I have a comment about, it looks like the potential of a lot more dwellings than we currently have in Roanoke. So, I know I keep, like a record, bringing it up. I hope we will at least evaluate the split land tax situation at some point because I know people's improvement values will go up a lot once they start adding these structures, and that will drastically change what they're paying to the city, which is a good thing, but we'll evaluate other options, too. Just time was this, I see on the website the, the pieces that are broken out and the procedural, will we be voting on a series of ordinances? Will this be one massive ordinance that we will go through? And then, what have, what will be the effective date of it? Will there be an option for us to adopt it and delay it for a little bit so that people can truly see what's happening in case we have to make any changes before it formally goes into effect?
I, I can tell you typically what we do is we adopt the entire underwind ordinance. And, and we, it typically goes into effect at 7:30 PM or whatever, when council adopts it. We don't have to do that if that's an option. I, I think if, if we're not totally happy with the package, we want to delay. We want to delay, we want to go back and fix the big code and, and have the effective date be the next day. But, but if that's, if, if we're open to, to different approaches to it, we can, we can make that happen if that's desired.
If it, if it comes from the Planning Commission to us, is there an opportunity that it might, for any reason, go back to the Planning Commission before it came to us for a final, or would it most likely just be Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and then we vote? Because I know you all have worked a long time on this, but there are going to be a lot of people in the city who start getting involved right now.
I, I, I think what we would like to do, our approach there would be if there are real misgivings about the, the, the version that is advanced from the Planning Commission, that we would either like the opportunity to, to make corrections, staff make corrections, because it's not final until, until you adopt it. And, and so, we can make those, those amendments on the fly. We'd rather not be there, Mr. Spencer doesn't want us here the night of the hearing making those amendments. But if they're surgical and, and you're changing a eight to a seven or something like that, we could, we, we could accommodate that. Or, you could simply move ahead with your public hearing, close that, or, or reconvene at a later time and actually vote at a later time on those.
Just given how comprehensive this is, even, we could have the option of keeping the public hearing open and taking action at a future date so that we can make the changes at that time. I was thinking ahead because this is a big thing that's going to be undertaken. Thank you, that's-
We, we, staff will make accommodations to whatever the prerogative of council is, so.
Yeah, I would just like to think that by the time you finish with the public hearings and everything that you've already done, we would be ready, rather than putting it off. I think that you've done so much work, and we've spent a lot of time preparing for it. I think by then, it sounds like we, we would be ready. I, I would hope that you wouldn't have to put it off and set it off for a later date, but that wasn't, I was just piggybacking on what Mr. Pretty said. But I just want to thank you because, you know, we, we heard from a lot of folks today as we were waiting for you guys to come forward about community engagement, and I cannot recall anything that we have done that have been of this magnitude or, or anything in this city without engaging our community. And I think that there's just some misnomers out there that, that are, that are false because I think we make a special effort here in Roanoke City, and I just wanted to reiterate that and emphasize that to our, to folks who are watching, anybody who's left here, that we make it a priority to engage our residents here in the city of Roanoke, and I just want to thank you all for doing that and to continue doing that. It looks like you have a whole nother half tour left throughout the city. I looked at the different places, you're going to be, you're going to be all over Roanoke City. So, thank you, Mr. Chittam and your staff for doing that because I, I think it's important that people understand how important it is to all of us that we involve our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chittam, I want to thank you and the Planning Department for all your work. I know that this is not an easy reform. I know it is something that you guys have, have tackled before, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, or tried to tackle before, but I hope we'll be able to get over the finish line this time. Mr. Pretty's comments, you know, I, I would say that time is kind of of the essence when we have a 4,000 housing shortage. So, I, I hope that you guys have put a lot of time and effort, a lot of community engagement, and I think that, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move this forward in March. I just wanted to have, I've heard, you know, we have accessory dwelling units are available on every property. You can't currently have one of those in the house, like an English basement. Is that something that would be available with the new zoning?
Yes, we put, we put that in there, absolutely.
Okay, great. So, again, just thank you guys so much for everything that you've done and look forward to hearing what happens after the, the next round of public engagement.
Thank you and appreciate your support.
Mr. Mayor, one important point, the lawyer, of course, hears this. This plan puts the city of Roanoke in the best compliance it could have with the Federal Fair Housing Act. This lines right up with federal law and is very important when we look at fair housing throughout our community. Right. Thank you. Good point.
The, one of the other things I would add to what Councilman Voloson said, too, is what, what we can do as a city, what you all can do, of course, is adopt policy that sets the stage for more production of housing. We don't produce the housing, so it really now is time then to create, you know, if we create the environment as best we can for the private sector to respond, then that's the next piece. Again, going back to the example of the policy that you put in place just a couple of years ago, which allowed by right multifamily to be placed on commercial property, which again was the share it and redevelopment, the market did respond, and the private market did indeed actually act and construct some additional housing. So, that will be key to this, and it'll be part of what we have to monitor also to see if these, if these policy changes are actually resulting in a private response or not. And if they're not, then we have to start figuring out why as we, as we work our way through it. But this sets the stage for that, but we're still dependent on private responses.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thanks, everybody. It was really awesome. I just had two follow-up questions. On one of the slides you showed, I think it was the data piece at the very beginning, the number 1,000 about housing choice vouchers, and that, I think that's the waiting list. I know you've kind of peripherally addressed this through the presentation, but could you talk, talk with us a little bit about how these zoning reforms will help us reduce that number?
For the, for the waiting list?
Yeah, how it might help us, because I know it's connected with more availability, but I know there's more nuances with that.
I know the biggest problem that we have, Vice Mayor, is, is that, that we, we put vouchers in people's hands and set a priority on people who are in encampment, for example.
Right.
And they, they have no place to use it. There are simply no housing units available at any, at any price point out there. And so, that lag of the market, because we don't create new housing, public or, or private, is, is just caused a general shortage of, of housing. And so, what's remarkable, and this is a little bit off topic, but, but what's remarkable with the housing market is in, in the way that we live as a, as, you know, community, and we're not unique about this, is that the whole time since the 60s, we've had somewhere from between 97,000 and 101 people living in the city. And so, that's bounced up and down, but really, but the number of housing units has constantly increased in a significant way. So, people are living, families' sizes are getting smaller, that's the bottom line. And so, so you have to just continue to create a certain number of housing units, even if your population is not increasing. So, we know we're not getting that replacement or, or natural increase of housing, but we're also having people come here, which is a good thing. We're attracting people to our community, and there are people coming here as a result of all of our economic development efforts, and they have no place to live. And they, they have a really hard time finding housing here. So, it's not, it's an economic development issue. When it comes to vouchers, I, I think the number of vouchers is just chronically limited, and that's, that's, that's a function of incomes. And, and, and so, that's, that's something where we just have to constantly work on the economic development side of the equation to, to get incomes to come up so they can, they can afford housing and not need a voucher and perhaps be able to find some lower-cost housing that doesn't require a voucher. So, we're really doing an all of the above approach and, and, but, I mean, the, the real frustrating thing right now is what I described at the beginning, which is we put vouchers in people's hands, and, and there's a long waiting list, and still these, there are folks who cannot use them. And, and that's, that's, that's the severity of our situation. If we had no other indicator of a housing crisis, that would be it.
But the, the other follow-up was on the slide about the group care facility, transitional living, number 14. I'm really glad to see this, and, and I'm interested to know, you know, we, we have a need for permanent supportive housing, and we've certainly seen some recent efforts to expand that. And I, I know that Commonwealth Catholic Charities now is the organization that's guiding our permanent supportive housing. I'm thinking about people who have been homeless for a long period of time, for whom moving them in, you know, taking that leap to housing. Oftentimes, that's not sustainable because they've just not been in that kind of situation for a while, and without supportive services, they're not able to sustain the housing, and, and it contributes to a return to homelessness, which we're also trying to reduce. Is there capacity within this model for there to be, whether it's a house or a building of some kind? I know we'd have to look at that, but where a homeless service provider could manage a property for up to, I don't know, does this say?
Eight?
Eight people?
Yes.
Is that a model that could be utilized in this regard?
Yes.
Okay.
That's very intentional because we did have a proposal a number of years back for a small, small number of homeless, formerly homeless individuals to live in a house, and we couldn't let them do, the zoning ordinance won't let that happen. And, and we think, you know, the impact on the surrounding neighborhood would be negligible if there, if, if any. And, and, and so, we have to think, you know, about our broad, broad policy choices that our zoning ordinance leads us into, which is concentration and containment, right? When we, when we deal with homeless sheltering or permanent supportive services and people making transitions. And so, we, we think that a more equitable model would be that smaller scale and dispersed and dignified settings is a better model. And so, you'll see in, in the definition of, of household that Brittany shared, that people who, up to eight people living in a household, not related, and we don't, we don't talk about whether they're receiving supportive services or, or counseling or anything like that. But in our current zoning ordinance, does do that. And so, that, that's, that's a very exclusionary feature, if you want to call it- And so, that, that's, that's a very exclusionary feature, if you want to call it that, of our current zoning, that we'll, we'll get rid of so that we can have a more equitable model for, for, and, and have it be available. Because when we restrict it, we restrict where it can go, to this little patch of land that's an acre and 43 square miles, then that, that makes it very difficult to, to provide those services because the, the real estate is so limited.
Thank you. I'm really happy to see that.
All right.
Okay.
It's just, it's going to lead to more density, it's going to lead to more investments in transit and we'll see where that goes. So, that's good.
Well, and, and our neighborhoods have been de-densifying for the last many decades, so.
Looks like Bob was giving me the hook here.
Mr. Chittam, with the new zoning proposal, how soon do you think we could be able to have reached out to the 4,000 units that we're in need? If you had a chance on the day?
It is impossible for us to tell, but, but we do have some coming online now that we're going to count, take credit for anyway. But it remains to be seen. It really depends on how the private market developers respond. What we're trying to do here is remove the barriers first and then we do recognize, as we did with accessory dwelling units, that if you remove the barriers, that doesn't mean everybody's going to rush in and do it. So, we may need to work the other side of the equation to induce developers to develop housing, as we will do with our Affordable Housing Loan Fund. There are some other things that we can do to help developers tap into low income housing tax credits that are available at the state and federal level that are underused here. And, and, and we know that there are, when we make the signals that we're receptive to this by removing these barriers, I think the private sector will, will respond. I am very eager to find out how this figure of cost burdening moves when we have the largest apartment complex in Roanoke's history come online in a couple of years. So, we hope that will have some of the intended impact. It remains to be seen. We will continue to monitor, to see how well we're doing with this and, and do other things that are within our power to move the needle on that, for sure.
And thank you for all you have done.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Of course, before I move to the next one, I'd be shortchanging as if I didn't note that the other side of that coin of what we just talked about, in terms of affordability, is on the economic development side, which is actually getting folks in our community access to better paying jobs, more jobs and so on, so that they also have that side of the equation, not just simply by, not just simply trying to create a scenario for people to have access to low cost homes, also getting their incomes up. So, that's why you do the work that you do on economic development as well and support the projects that you support. This is actually going to be a fairly quick briefing, I think, because it's really intended to introduce this idea and really to get some kind of reaction to it. And then we'll have, if appropriate, subsequent conversations with, with you all as we, if we should progress. Let me throw out a couple of statistics first. Between 2022 and 2023, there were 128, or 121 citations issued for speeding in school zones. A recent analysis by an independent party in one week of analysis found on average, 32% of all vehicles moving through school zones, AM and PM, were speeding, with a high in one school zone, that being West Side Elementary, where there were 70% of the vehicles traveling through that school zone were speeding, and by speeding meaning 10 miles or more over the posted speed limit. In, in one recent week of focused enforcement in school zones, you saw this recently in the, in the media, there were 100 citations issued for speeding, four for passing school buses, 10 for reckless driving, nine suspended or no license, and 10 other moving violations, for a total of 133 citations in one week. So, this item is dealing with the use of photo speed monitoring devices in work zones, and, I'm sorry, in school crossing zones. The code actually allows for work zones, we're talking about school, school crossing zones. Before I get started though, I want to acknowledge Sheriff Hash and the fact, Sheriff actually is the one that brought this forward to us. The code was approved by the General Assembly in 2020. Sheriff Hash, of course, with his folks working as SROs continually see these violations repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. And so, the sheriff came to us and said, hey, can we talk about this a bit further? So, the sheriff, myself, the chief and the city attorney had a conversation and walked through and ultimately, we decided to bring this forward to you all for, for conversation to determine again if we should move forward. So, certainly want to thank the sheriff for raising that and bringing it forward for, for this discussion. Title 46.2-882.1 of the Virginia State Code enables the use of photo speed monitoring devices in school crossing zones. And again, that was approved in 2020. The violations that it refers to are those violations traveling 10 miles a mo, 10 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. It is a civil penalty, not a criminal penalty, under that code, and it is not to exceed $100 per violation as provided currently by the, by the state code. It also prescribes physical requirements, so things like where signs have to be posted, where the cameras would be, what kind of warnings, all of those kinds of things are discussed in the code. There are also process requirements, meaning, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, but who actually has to review the, the photos, the photo evidence of, of the speeding and ultimately how the citation is issued and those types of things. So, that's prescribed in the code as well. And then data management requirements. So, this deals with privacy, what the information can be used for, and ultimately when that information has to be destroyed. So, all of that's covered in the current code. There are conversations going on around this code and other related codes at the General Assembly right now, so those may be changing as, as the session ends, but right now, that's the, the current status associated with it. For all, for all violations, they are photo documented and they're all individually affirmed by an assigned law enforcement officer. So, a law enforcement officer reviews every one of these instances to deem whether or not indeed there was a violation, as the camera has, has indicated that there was. In this case, in conversation with the sheriff and the chief, it's the expectation that it would actually be the sheriff's department that would have resources that we would dedicate to, to this effort. And, and the way this program operates in Virginia and in other states where it is, you actually contract with a private party. So, the private party, the contractor provides all equipment and services that are involved in it and they retain a fee for doing, for doing that work. Again, all violations must still be reviewed by an assigned law enforcement officer and there is, there's not a, there's not a limit necessarily on what that citation is, I mean, I'm sorry, what that fee is that's associated by the private party, but it has to be tied to the recovery of their services, of the cost of their services, the cost of the equipment that was put in and the cost of the services. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about how you arrive at that because there's a contract that you enter into that actually addresses that. Again, as mentioned, there are limits on the use of data collected and, and again, requirements to purge data following the collection of the, of the penalties. The use of the data collected, really, it just prescribes that it is for this purpose and this purpose alone. You can't use the information that's been captured by one of these cameras to run some kind of warrant on the plate for something else or some search for a warrant off of the plate or some other kind of activity. That is prohibited by, by the state law. And I believe it's like within 60 days of the citation being paid that actually the record has to be purged from, from, from the company that has, has that information. One of the folks that we spoke with that actually has these, one of the contractors that has these in place across the state has evidence that there was a 90% reduction in incidences of speeding in school zones following implementation. So, of course, one would ask too, why would they do this if there's a 90% reduction and they put in the equipment and they're relying, of course, on the fees in order to pay for the equipment they put in? Well, on one hand, they're doing it, of course, to make the school zones safer. On the other hand, believe it or not, even with only that 10% of violations occurring, there is still enough, enough of those occurring that it actually pays the cost of the equipment in actually operating the system. Again, as mentioned, the, the police department and the sheriff and, and the school will have to collaborate with the sheriff's office in an implementation of any kind of program like this. There are two ways in which we can ultimately contract for this service if it's something we choose to do. One of those is a traditional way in which we would issue a request for proposals and you would simply issue that. You would issue a request for proposals for contractors that do this and they would submit their proposals. In those proposals, they would talk about the fees that they would charge in order to recover their, their expenses associated with it. They would also talk about how long that contract would need to be and so on. So, that's one, one mechanism. The other is because these are already in place in multiple communities across the state, most of those communities or many of those communities have a cooperative agreement language in their contract. So, we also could go and use one of those cooperative agreements and actually just select the firm using the same terms that were already bid out by other communities. Again, no, no decisions have been made on that because we don't actually know if we want, or you want us to pursue this as we go forward. But those are the two ways in which we could, we could do that. A few of the communities that have already either put this in place or in the process of developing photo enforcement, and this is not an exhaustive list, just identifying a few of these, Bristol, With County, Front Royal, Sussex County, Wakefield, Harrisonburg and Fairfax County. And those are just a few of the, the communities that already have these in place. And again, others are in development currently. There is also, as I mentioned, a, a couple of bills pending in the General Assembly that are on point with this. One of those actually would expand this program to, for lack of a better description, kind of known trouble intersections. So, if there are, there's been a fatality in a particular intersection, you could actually use this system in those intersections. Do not know whether that's ultimately going to pass or not to the General Assembly. And, and again, whether or not it will be a separate program or whether it would be somehow wrapped into this program, but just so you know that, that's out there. And really, at this point, here to answer any questions, and the chief is here, I think still, he had another appointment, so we were trying to move, answer any question, but what we're really looking for is just, is there interest in this? And if there is any interest in it, we would come back with a more complete briefing where we would actually show you what the equipment could look like, we would show you kind of what the standards are for, for those, those items and stuff. But didn't even want to do that if there was no interest in moving, moving beyond this.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question. Do we, are we familiar with any firms in this area? Because I would be interested in that. Do we?
Yes, what I don't want to do, so we've met with one of the firms.
Oh, you are? Okay, so you are familiar.
We have. But there are more than one, there are multiple firms that work in this area.
So, we have some options. I was just wondering if there's anybody who provided that.
Yes, and, and, yeah, and so, they've provided us some information that we can use for this. In fairness of being able to be open and if we prove, move forward in this of who we might choose as a contractor, I didn't, I certainly didn't want to bring any of their documents and share those because again, it really is information from their private company. But we can use certainly some examples of other places that have put up the cameras and actually show you what they look like.
Ball Park on the cost?
Actually, I, yeah, because there's no cost to us.
There's no cost to, okay.
No, no, there's no cost to the city.
Other than, oh, okay, yeah. I remember you saying that now.
I mean, all, what you're doing is, and I don't think the information they gave us had that, what you're, ultimately what you're doing is you're entering into a contract, basically a non, an exclusive contract with the provider of the equipment and the service for a set period of time so that they know they can recover their investment in what they've done through whatever citations might be issued with it. There are provisions, I know the city attorney asked in the meeting about provisions regarding, what if the General Assembly next year decided to remove this opportunity? Those, those are written into the contract so that it does not cost us for their removal. There is a cost if the council actually took that action and said, hey, we know we're making up the timelines here, but we know we signed for a five-year agreement, two years in we decided not to do this. The contractor would then expect and would, would be able to receive some recovery of their investment, but not if it takes action that's outside of the control of the council.
So, they would do their own collections? I'm trying to figure out how that.
Yes, so they actually, yes, so they, they are the party that actually has the cameras, that comes to them.
I see the chief shaking his head. I'm just wondering how.
Yeah, the, the role of the locality is that law enforcement official verifying that indeed a violation occurred, but everything else is handled by that, by that private company.
The citations, the collections and everything, okay.
All right, going down the line, people at the end of the dais coming up, starting with.
Mr. Cal, I'd be in favor of having cameras because, so we need to do something because it's getting crazy outside. You know, the people are speeding and, and we don't have enough police force to enforce it. So, I'm in favor of looking into it.
Thank you.
You can go through my list. You have your notepad, Bob?
Yeah, you can go through the list and I may have to have the chief answer some of it.
Well, and I know, so I had an opportunity to, to speak with someone who runs one of these companies. I believe that Councilmember Moon Reynolds did as well, but they told me that they met her on BML Day. These are worthy things to consider. I think there are just lots of components that we need to factor in as council, especially regarding whatever contract's going to be entered into and how they're going to operate in this area. Generally, there are some philosophies, people who don't really like these kinds of things, but there, there is some value to them and the benefit of reducing the amount of speeding that happens in a school zone. Some of the concerns, I guess, I would have is just about how many schools we would look at doing this for. You know, right now, the General Assembly, you mentioned some of the legislation, what they would perceive doing is expanding the opportunity for it to be reviewed not only by law enforcement, but also by retired law enforcement, so long as they were certified when they retired. And I really think that that's supposed to get at, that the way that a lot of these are working is the, an SRO in a school is the law enforcement personnel who is reviewing these to actually be issued. And then these generate revenue in that school area, can be used to help pay for that SRO program. You just have to look at long-term funding implications if you're reducing the amount of funds over time that's coming in, you can't really rely on that as a revenue source. For anyone who speeds in an area, they generally have a 10 mile per hour window. If, you know, it says 25 is what the speed is, you don't really get a ticket till you're going 35. Where I would have more concern are the areas that we have reduced it down to 15, but which is great to reduce speeding, but if someone's going 25, are they magically going to get a ticket? Are we going to try and adjust these for a larger viewing area, maybe so that it's 30 miles per hour before they get a ticket? Let's see, who reviews them? The, the biggest piece right now that has not been addressed in the code is the transfer of liability for people who get tickets. So, right now, if, like, when I was younger, if I was driving my car and I got the ticket, my dad would be responsible for it because it is in his name and he could not transfer that liability to me in court. He would be the one who's responsible despite the fact that I would have been the one caught for speeding. Those are just some of the aspects that, yeah, well, currently, I've seen that Kagan, the attorney, questioning the audience, but those are just some of the things that would need to be addressed. I would caution this council to, if this is something we're going to move forward on, to, to limit it to one of our most problem areas first, to, to see how it goes, what the public's response is. Because when I go to neighborhood meetings, everyone wants one of those things that tells people how fast they're going. And I said, well, we can enforce them. They go, oh, well, we don't, we don't want people to get tickets, we just want people to stop speeding. And so, how do you balance trying to get people to stop speeding without actually having them to pay a penalty for the fact that they are speeding? Just really limiting it and scope to what we do at first to test out before we want to expand it to other areas in the school.
Yeah, and there is the ability, I guess I would say even beyond ability, it's probably an expectation in the programs that there is a, a period that is established really by, by the city through the contract where what is issued are warnings, not, not citations with it. Because again, the intent is to actually educate people to get them to stop speeding rather than actually issue the summons as they go through. So, certainly that's a piece of it. There is actually, I think, in the, in the code, there is a process for that transfer of liability, so that would have to be a part of what would be incorporated if there was a desire to do that. That piece of, and to your question regarding kind of what schools, I just want to, so let me, let me just sort of, so when I made mention that earlier, there was a study done here locally and there were like 30-something speeding. So, I apologize, there's a long list here, so let me go through. Addison Middle School, 49%, Fairview Elementary, 39%, Fallon Park, 46%, Forest Park, 46%, Garden City, 26%, Grandin Court, 28%, Hurt Park, 38%, Lincoln Terrace, 9%, Morningside, 41%, Virginia Heights, 32%, Wassena, 23%, West Side, again, I mentioned, 35%. And West Side, there were two of them on one, that was on the Herschberger side, on the West Side Drive side, 62%. So, I just say that actually, at least in this study, the indication is all of our school zones are experiencing, all of our elementary and middle school zones are experiencing that speeding. But at the end of the day, it would ultimately be up to council as to what the scope of, and, and assuming it's a big enough scope that you could actually get a contractor that would actually do the work. But yeah, ultimately, it's up to you all what ones you would include in that, in that process, if you chose to do it.
Thank all.
Put one in every school zone. I, I live on a street that is one of our speedways and they're four-way stops. I mean, it's just the, the behavior of drivers is, is really unacceptable, especially in these school zones. So, I think to the degree that we, you know, we can have all the public awareness campaigns in the world and that is clearly not reducing the, the problem. And so, I would, I would support not only a pilot, but in multiple places. And so I would support not only a pilot, but in multiple places to just show that we're serious about this and can hopefully help reduce some of the incidents that are occurring. I mean, that number of 133 in one week is, and that's probably not all of them. That's the ones they were able to address. So it's clearly a problem. So I'm fully in support of it and appreciate all the background work you've done on it.
All right, Peter.
Just a couple of quick questions. So these cameras would only be able to catch speeding, they wouldn't be able to catch going around a bus or anything like that?
Correct. So they're actually basically laser designed, so they actually focus, and they actually are designed to focus down on the license plate. So the images also don't catch who's driving it or any of those kinds of things because that's, goes back to some of the privacy concerns at the beginning is, you're in a school zone, you speed, picture is taken, and you happen to be in a car with someone who's not your wife or not your husband. That's not, that's not in this.
Yes, we need it.
It captures the license plate, so. But yes, it can only, it's actually only able to do that piece of it. All of those other violations of that 133 that I mentioned that the chief had provided me in his last operation, those would still all be dependent upon actual enforcement by actual law enforcement officers on scene.
And the second thing is, chief, you've been sitting there all day. I just want to know, you know, what do you, what is your recommendation? You know, you're our top police officer, so.
Well, you know, certainly, I hate to speak for the sheriff. I hate to speak for the sheriff. He's very passionate about this. You know, I do think this is a force multiplier in our community. I am not known for photo enforcement. You know, I'm the person who likes to come in and really get that gun violence number down, right? That's my passion over the last 30 years. But I think this allows us to have our cake and eat it too, right? Still really focus on our communities that need us as far as reducing violent crime and still enforcing speeding in our school zones and making school safety a priority. So I like it because it allows us to do both. To me, the important thing is the communication so that we can still do the enforcement and go out and get those over 100 summonses when needed. Because I do believe that both have to coexist. And we still can still do that, right? So that would just be communication between the police department and the sheriff's office to say, hey, we have a speed enforcement operation plan for these school areas on these days of the week. Can you disengage the system so we can focus on that? That's how it would work. I think it would be a good thing for our community. A lot of people don't like that. I know red light cameras went horribly wrong in the Commonwealth of Virginia during implementation. I'm getting a head nod from Tim. I think we did a horrible job in law enforcement communicating that to communities. From what I've seen, and I'm still in the research process, and I've got Virginia Chiefs coming up, so I'm going to sit down with some vendors if we do move forward and get more information on this. But from what I've seen, they do a very good job with the educational piece on the rollout, right? So 30 days out, they're talking to the community as flyers, they're using social media, and they're educating folks on what's coming. Also, and I think this is by code, Tim, that there's increased signage and lighting that's tied into this type of enforcement, right?
That signage is required.
Right. So there's increased signage with, which also increases the safety aspect of it, right? So you're also getting that, and the vendor that I know we sat down with, you know, that's part of, part of what they do. That's baked into the cake that they put that in there. So, you know, I think it's good for communities. It did go wrong in Alta Vista, Virginia. No offense, did I say that right? Alta Vista?
Alta Vista.
So Alta Vista, right, when they implemented this in 2020 or 2021, probably 2021, there was a time where they, the community failed to communicate when school zones were not active, so the technology was still running. So they erroneously issued hundreds of tickets, right? So that was a bit of a dust-up. You might have seen that in the local media at the time. So I think as far as liability is concerned, that would be the one thing that I would be the most worried about, is to make sure that we had constant communication with the school so when it's not an active school zone, so we disengage that equipment.
I spoke with the vendor, and they even discussed that that's with the process of them having to verify it now from a law enforcement officer, they've addressed that because there'll be days where there's a holiday, but it's still the school zone time. Technically, it shouldn't apply then, and they'll go back and undo those if that happens now, so.
Good, that's a good thing.
When you talk about signage, are we talking about those photo forced signs or more actual school zone signage?
There's school zone signs that tell you and put the drivers on notice that they're subject to receiving civil penalty.
And that's tied to the code. I think they have to have signage to use that technology.
Cool. All right, well, I'd be in favor of this. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, I think at one time there was even discussion, I don't think it ended up in the code, but there was discussion at one point of not only the sign talking about speed enforcement, but actually the signs that actually tell you what speed you're traveling at as you enter into that zone. But I don't think that ended up in the final version. But, well, Mayor, I think what we'll do then, based on what we've heard, again, this requires much more discussion. So what we'll do is we'll prepare a briefing that actually includes more information, maybe even take a couple of the school zones to kind of show how it would actually work in one of those school zones, like where different things would be placed, where the signs would be placed, where the other warnings would. There are examples of what the summons looks like that we could show you and a whole host of other things. So didn't even want to take that step if there was no interest in pursuing that. So we'll get that scheduled. And then we'll start talking if there's a desire at that point to continue to proceed forward, then we'll start talking about the procurement method. That might be preferred as we go forward with it. All right, very good. Thank you.
All right. We now go down to recommendations for action, Madam Clerk. Item A is acceptance of a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Fund for acquisition, demolition, and site restoration of eight flood-prone properties. Is the resolution?
Move the resolution second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program grant made to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management upon certain terms and condition and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentation on behalf of the city in order to accept the grants.
All right, any discussion for members of council? Madam Clerk, call the rule, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. The budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the acquisition, demolition, I'm so sorry, demolition, and site restoration of eight flood-prone properties, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the 2023, 2024 stormwater fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion with members of council? Madam Clerk, call the rule, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to recognize our city manager for any comments that he may have.
No comments. Thank you.
All right. This is item number two, the city attorney, amendment of city code section 24-2.1, prohibition of firearms on city property. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending section 24-2.1 prohibition of firearms on city property to chapter 24, public buildings and property generally, to remove public property adjacent to any being used for permitted or unpermitted events for the restrictions imposed thereunder, providing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion for members of council?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, a couple of things to make sure that we're absolutely clear. First of all, the recommended amendments are not made because we believe our current ordinance is not legal or constitutional. In fact, just the opposite. We believe our current ordinance as drafted is legal and constitutional. This is just to address a logistical issue that we have on enforcement of permitted events, given the large number of those events, especially in the summer, when dealing with things such as 5Ks and parades. Also, hand it out and just make sure it's clear, this is the version that new paragraph F has the word facilities at the bottom, second to last sentence. I believe that that is what is out for the public to see, but just want to make sure that that's clear. As it says, community center facilities, plural, operated by the city. Just make sure that that's absolutely clear, which one we're considering. Again, I have, any questions council might have, willing to address. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion with members of council?
Just want to reiterate the point from this morning, that you also discussed something regarding logistical reasons for why we're making this update, and that we will continue to evaluate what we might need to change logistically in order to maybe reenact this at some point.
Correct. And if council so deems appropriate to add back certain permitted events where it might not be all of them, for example, not saying that council wants to do this, but may do this, if council decides that we'll put up the signage for parades, that we believe that parades are a place that families should feel safe from having those with firearms nearby, then council can indeed adopt that belief from a legal standpoint. But at this point, I think it's best, since we don't logistically have the resources necessary to post every 5K, or I believe there's half marathons also, that that's a lot of lane miles to have to put up signs and take signs, a lot of resources. So thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the rule, please.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, number eight is the post-off committed is none. Number nine, unfinished business, none. Ten, introduction and consideration of orders and resolutions, none. Item number eleven is motion and miscellaneous business, incredible comments by the mayor of members of city council. Does anybody have any incredible comment?
I do, promise it's quick. We keep talking about the bridge coming down and what the electoral board might do regarding the precinct that's located at Highland Park Elementary School. I know that they're looking into it. I just hope you get a report about what those actions will be from the electoral board at some point.
I'll talk with Andy and then work with our communication folks and make sure that that communication gets taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee.
All right, Mr. Volison.
Just an update from RVTV.